Roll call of members, District One, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District Two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District Three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District Four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District Five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District Six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At Large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Next on the agenda is to set the term of office for the Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. This has typically been a one-year term. Do I have a motion to set the term for the office for Chairperson and Vice Chairperson?
I'll make a motion we set it for one year.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Jeter's made a motion, Ms. Addington second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Term has been set for one year. Next on the agenda is the election of a Chairperson. Do I have any nominations for Chairperson for 2025?
Ms. Starnes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris Manus.
Mr. Manus has been nominated, any other nominations for Chairperson?
I'd like to, oh. I make the motion that nomination cease and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Manus will be the Chairperson for 2025. We'll take a short minute to rearrange seats and then we'll be right back.
Everybody set? You ready?
There you go.
I appreciate the nomination. Thank y'all so much. It's gonna be a little bit different and I might be a little bit slow, but we'll get through this. I'll get better as it goes. Next on our agenda, we have elect a Vice Chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Glover.
I'll second.
Okay. And the nominations? Okay. Does anybody want to close now?
I'll make the motion that nomination cease and we vote by acclamation.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Looks like we have a... Oh yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like I said, it's gonna take me just a little bit to get comfortable and everything. Next on our agenda is setting a meeting day and time for 2025. Do we want to change that? Do we want to keep it like it has been?
I'll make a motion we keep it like it is.
First Wednesday of every month at nine o'clock?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stands first Wednesday, nine a.m. Now we'll move on to adopt rules of procedure. Has everybody been given a copy of the rules of procedure and been able to review those? Are there any changes that anyone would like to make?
Were there any changes from the previous?
I don't believe so. So you can correct me if I'm wrong there.
Can we amend these during the year?
Sure. As I understand it, they're just our rules of procedure, right? For our specific board, so we have control over those. It's not mandated or anything. No changes? No. Do I have a motion to accept the, or adopt the rules of procedure as presented?
So moved.
All right, I'm gonna say Darrell.
Okay.
Seventy seconds.
Seventy seconds. That's fine.
That was too close to call. All right. Next we'll, oh, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Next we'll move on to approval of minutes. Has everybody had time to review the minutes? Thank y'all. Like I said, it's gonna take me a little bit.
It's fine.
I'm a little bit nervous. If you could imagine. Next we'll go over the approval of agenda. Has everybody got a copy of the agenda, been able to review it? Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make?
I do have an addition.
Okay.
Cover two or three goal topics, I don't know if we just should include it all under one. I'll get your trash committee update, promised program update. Number three, preventative oversight on potential problems such as the state line tire problem we recently had. And there are goals for the Richmond legislative session coming up.
Do you think we could cover that during supervisor comment and questions?
All of these, or?
All of them, sounds like good candidates for that. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, now, now for the approval of minutes. Has everyone gotten a copy of the minutes and been able to review those? Are there any changes, additions, corrections, anything like that? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
And I'll second.
All signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to... Move on to public expression. If you'll bear with me a moment, there's something that I need to read for this. Doesn't seem to have it.
It's on the...
It's on your tablet.
Yeah.
We will get through it, it's good. It's good.
Thank you. All right, so rules for citizen expression. Citizen expression period is a point of meeting when anyone that wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and what organization you represent, or if you're here just for your own self. The board may not, may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any actions will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Has anyone signed up to speak?
I have not.
Floor is open. Good to see you, Ms. Toss.
Yep, I got mixed up last month on getting around Pavy Toss from Snowflake Road, and I guess all of you know me by now, but that's where I'm from, Snowflake Road. And we're back from Snowflake Road. And we're here, I'm here, we're here about dirt roads in Scott County. Because they're all bad, any dirt roads you're on. And V-Dog, they just get enough money for a Band-Aid fix. And we did get some gravel on Snowflake Road, we appreciate that. And we're hoping and praying when you all go to Richmond with Mr. Turkey, I'll gore also, will get us some more money allotted for dirt roads in Scott County. Because we've got 250 miles of dirt roads. And they're, this morning they're packed down, but it comes a little bit of rain, you're in mud. You're either mud or dust. And we, and we also really need cell towers. We need cell service in the rural area. That's like back when you get off the road or get back in a, well, it's like during the hurricane. There was trees down. When you was caught between, well, you didn't have no cell service. And when all of us in Scott County drive by Riverside property, well, we see now that we're getting a church. And it's rumored that there's gonna be maybe childcare that will probably, well, that helped the county on saving on taxes and all that. Maybe they'll pay the light bill, the water bill, and the insurance and the... And whatever goes on. And then another thing, the population in Scott County is dropping. In 1980, from 1980 to 2023, it has dropped 14.6% in Scott County. And that, that affects our revenue. And keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan. I wish we could come up with something other than the six-year plan, but it don't look like that that'll never happen. And y'all have a happy, healthy new year. And pray that we can get some more money allotted for the dirt roads in Scott County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toss.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Stallard, I live on Big Moccasin. And I've been here a couple of times about a certain little dog that's chained 24/7, 365 days a year, in 100-degree heat in the summer and twenties in the teens in the winter. But today, I have a different little dog. I have a little beagle. A little miniature beagle that weighed 18 pound. And her owner had her and her mother and her sibling living in the house with her. And then when the mother died, the caring family put this little dog and her mother and her sibling out in a lot. And I have some pictures I want y'all to pass around and look at the lot that our animal control officer deems okay. I've got pictures. Both bowls, the food bowl and the water bowl is nothing but mud. And the mother dog died and the sibling died. Well, finally, a neighbor got Jackie Denton, who works with Rescue, to save the third little dog. And the thing is, it's not just this dog. There's thousands of dogs in Scott County that are not cared for. And it is the law in Virginia. A dog cannot be chained 24/7. A dog cannot be chained out under 32 degrees or over 84 degrees. They're supposed to have an elevated doghouse. Look at that nice doghouse there. What's left of it. It's just nothing but mud. Something's got to be done, you all. I don't know if I'm gonna have to hire a lawyer, if I'm gonna have to go to Richmond, I don't know. But the law in Scott County is not being enforced. And if you don't have anybody who can do it, they need to be replaced with somebody who can. And you just then voted on the time of these meetings for next year? Nine o'clock in the morning, the working citizens of Scott County cannot attend.
And y'all know that. Y'all know that.
Well, that's the reason it's at nine o'clock in the morning. Because y'all would have a lot bigger crowd if some of these working, taxpaying people could come and attend the meeting and give their opinions. Nine o'clock in the morning, just like last month, I came and I said I'm speaking for a teacher at Shoemaker. She couldn't come unless, she took her paycheck and took a day off work to come and attend here. Because she's a teacher and she had students. Well, she's here today because it's a holiday and she's gonna speak for herself today. Thank you.
Hi, Board. My name is Bobby Powers, Bobby Couch Powers, I'm from Dugana. I'm here to address the Board to discuss some misunderstandings at the last meeting regarding the Commonwealth Attorney's Budget and request a rescension on the courthouse addition vote to allow further research. I'm still waiting on the explanation for $500 a night hotel stays. Furthermore, I want to remind you, Mr. Bricky, that after recently finding out about your likely resignation as Chairman, that this will not appease me or stop me from proceeding with your recall petition. I intend to pursue your recall relentlessly. I'm giving you the option to resign from the Board before I move forward with the recall position. Any findings resulting from the investigation from the recall effort will be posted publicly. Second, I came here prepared to make a public apology after condemning the Commonwealth Office budget. But after research, I would like to apologize for the misrepresentation that Frida and Mr. Bricky refused to acknowledge at the meeting and their lack of communication about the Commonwealth's funding and budget. A simple email would have cleared everything up. However, I had to reach out to Kyle and email him and give him my number, have him call me at his convenience. I set up a meeting with him and Dan to go over everything with me. Scott Services and another program operates under the Commonwealth budget, which wasn't explained by Frida or Mr. Bricky, and accounts for a portion of their budget. I'd like to thank this misrepresentation wasn't intentional or designed to ensure the Commonwealth's Office looked frivolous in their spending. Next, I'd like to address the courthouse renovation. The current designs do not ensure the inmates will be kept away from the general public. I would like to recommend rescinding the previous vote to allow the Board to tour the courthouse and see for themselves how this addition will not be beneficial for the courthouse, employees, inmates, or public. We will be spending $3 million for an addition that is impractical. I understand historic restorations and additions can be costly. However, for $3 million, can we not come up with an addition that will serve the community and keep the courthouse employees and public safe? Please consider looking into this and rescinding the vote to allow further research before wasting further funds. I would like to request the bid proposal with all the expenses. $3 million for a 30 by 100 addition is a little exorbitant. Lastly, I'd like to address the excessive job titles and how transfer helper and group leader are added to the end of people's titles to boost their salary, inflate their salaries. I want to verify that every employee under you all is being paid for a position for eight hours daily and not receiving a salary for two and three different positions like transfer helper and group leader. I'd like to thank the Board for their time and I hope you take my recommendations into consideration and I look forward to your response on my request, especially the $500 a night hotel stays.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Anyone else?
Mr. Manus?
Yep.
If I could ask Ms. Powers a question?
Sure.
Can you give me the details of where you're seeing the $500 a night hotel room?
Do you mind letting the next person speak while you pull that up? Sorry. It's all right.
I'm gonna try to do this without emotion. My name is Blakely Taylor. I am a teacher at Shoemaker Elementary. I've been teaching for 23 years in Scott County. Mr. Scott hired me and said, "You'll never leave." And I'm from Bristol and I've taught here for 23 years and I absolutely love it. It's my second family. I am a volunteer for the Animal Shelter of Sullivan County. And my kids are, have paws. So I don't have my own children. I have children at school and they're like mine. So when somebody asks me how many kids you have, I say like, I don't know, 600 and some, because I've been teaching a long time. Which I feel like I look good to have 600 kids, you know? But I passionately feel like the Scott County Animal Shelter is not honoring their oath that they took to protect the animals in Scott County. And I am in the business, I am at a shelter, I've seen animals euthanized, I've taken animals to rescue. I just drove a carload of cats a few days ago. So I see the reality of what it should be, so I don't think it's unrealistic of the things that I expect that should be happening in Scott County. So, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try not to be emotional. This is the little dog that has been tied up for multiple years. I call daily, on my way to work, I pass it. I offered the owner to pay for it, to take it to rescue. I've called Animal Control, if you pulled up the records, it's a surprise they've not blocked my number. I call daily. I emailed Bill Degas, which he said that little tiny dog was made for outdoor weather. It's a little Jack Russell. I don't know that any animal should be out in extreme Arctic temperatures daily, tied up 24 hours a day, every day of the year. And I messaged Ms. Starnes as well. I messaged the Kilgore's Office. I've messaged Richmond, I've messaged PETA. I'm trying my best to get someone down here. I think the animal shelter needs to be investigated. They're putting animals down that are healthy, one broke a leg and they just put it down. I would love to fundraise for the shelter. I do a lot of things for Sullivan County. I've got a big mouth and I like to advocate for people that can't speak for their self. So for children and animals, I feel like God put me on this earth to do that. And I just feel like, I'm sorry. I just feel like these animals are being let down by Mr. Degas and the animal control officers. And I'm willing to help, our community is willing to help. They don't want volunteers in the shelter because these animals lay on the floor. They don't get treats, they don't get blankets, they don't get anything. I've got a carload of toys that I would love to take over there, they won't let them have it. So I'm just begging somebody to step up for these animals, because I don't know what else to do. And they're dying, because those dogs died. My dogs were in front of, my cats were in front of a fireplace this morning. And that may not be what everyone does, because my husband says I'm excessive. But I would much rather do that and spoil the animals. I had a dog for 15 years and she was my life. I was not married, I don't have my own children, and she was my person. And I just can't imagine them driving out to this house and they tell me that that's fine. And they tell the owner that that's fine. I'm sure that dog's not vaccinated, that's a state law requirement to have rabies. It's not allowed to be tied up. The law doesn't say if the animal control officer says it's okay. It doesn't say, they get to decide, the law decides. And it says under 32 degrees and it shouldn't be tethered 24 hours a day, every day. And so I just feel like, I don't, I'm not asking for an expectation that is unrealistic or I'm trying to save these animals' lives. How many other animals are in Scott County that are dying, that are being left out like this? And I'm willing to step up and help, I'll help the shelter, I'll do fundraising, I'll do all kinds of things to help. I don't care to do that. But they don't let people in during public hours. I mean, my friend was not allowed in the shelter to try to adopt a dog. What are they doing in there that they don't want people to see? And I took a note, I've been teaching 23 years and I will stand for those kids, I fight for those kids. If I see somebody getting hurt or whatever, I'm gonna go to bat for them. That's my job. And 23 years later, I still love them and I still believe in it. They don't believe in these animals, they don't need to work for it, they don't need to be doing their job. If I become a day where I don't like my students and I don't fight for my kids, I need to quit. My oath is to take protection over those kids and do the best thing that I can for them. And I try every day faithfully. And I just wish they would do the same thing for those animals. Our animal control officer in Sullivan County would have taken that dog three years ago. And she called to reach out to him. My friends from Richmond have called to reach out to Jake. And they just want to make excuses. But I told them, I'll take the dog, I'll foster the dog, I'll pay for the dog, I'll offer the owner to pay. She had a family member that would take the dog in and chose not to. She's doing it out of spite now. But that's gonna kill this dog. Every day I drive by and pray to God, he's alive. So I know some people think they're just animals, but they're not to me. They're my kids. And they've saved my life when my mom and my grandma passed away, my animals were there to help me get through those things. So that lady needs to get that dog up and that animal control people need to step up and do their job. And like I said, I'm willing to help in any aspect that I can for fundraising and anything like that. I get it, it takes money, it takes funds, I understand those things. But I think somebody, please, I'm begging you, I'm begging you, to please somebody look into it. Because these people don't need to have the jobs they have. They just don't care for the animals. And I get that it's clinical in a certain way, but the law's the law. So I apologize, I'm not been able to get here before now because I teach and getting a substitute's like an act of Congress. But I appreciate you listening to me, I'm sorry I got upset. It's just something that I truly believe in. And so, thank you so much. I hope, you're welcome to reach out to me, if there's a way I can be of assistance for help in our shelter, to partner or whatever, then I'd be willing to do so.
Thank you.
Gaylord Palm Resorts. Matt Brock, 429. That's not the only one, but that's the only one I got time for this morning, because I got a job too. They know that.
I'll look at that, that's multiple nights, that's not one night.
It's also a hotel with a water park in it, so I'm sure it's not cheap.
Anyone else for public comment? No one else? Or close, public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. I think we're gonna be discussing the process of responding. Is that, we're gonna be doing that today?
Yes.
Okay. But one thing that came up about the animal control. I just had a question about, at what point do we follow state guidelines or we... What's the requirement of the county to follow the state guidelines?
Our animal control officer enforces the state comprehensive animal laws. And every situation is different. Every, dogs are a variety of species or a variety of breeds with different toxicities for different things. So they look at situations. The dog in question that they're talking about has been looked at several times. Our supervising vet went out and visited the site and found that the dog is in fine shape. The lady that owns the dog mentioned that when she brings it inside, it don't like being inside, it barks constantly till it's back outside. It has a heat lamp in its doghouse. Every time that animal control goes by, they go by because they expect a call on their way into work, just about every day, especially if it's colored, to check on that dog. Animal control in the last three years has seized over 70 dogs because of inhumane conditions. So we've investigated those. And we're talking about one animal control officer and a litter control officer that backs them up. You know, that's our manpower. Our shelter has the lowest euthanasia rate, maybe in the state, I know in the region. It's well below 9%. It was down at 3% at one time, it's just ridiculous. The reason that we don't euthanize unless we have to. We went for several years, some dogs are not adoptable or healthy to put back out. And there's no such thing as a no-kill shelter. And in fact, a no-kill shelter is one that's under 10%, I think, euthanasia rate. And we're below that. So we fit the guidelines for a no-kill shelter. But there's situations that come up that we're not going to adopt out an aggressive dog or we're not going to adopt out a dog that's suffering. or we're not going to adopt out a dog that's suffering. So, you know, and we don't do that in-house anymore. We take it to our supervising vet and he is euthanizing for it. So there's kind of a redundancy there on the call for that. You know, if we take a dog to the vet. Now, there's other circumstances. During COVID, everybody wanted a puppy. And a lot of people wanted a puppy until that puppy got grown. And they surrendered them to the shelter or put them out. And so we've had an influx of dogs. And we've only had a certain capacity. We don't have the resources that Sullivan County has. We don't have the money. When we rebuilt the shelter, I designed it and we built it for around $150,000. You know, a hundred by thirty shelter. You go around to other localities and see what they spent on their shelters and what it would cost. I know Bristol reached out to us and one of my plans, I said, "They're on a piece of grid paper." And, you know, they didn't even consider not spending two or three million dollars on their shelter, but they could. But Animal Control, you know, they investigate every call that they get. And, you know, sometimes they work with the owner to try to change the situation for the animal. There may be some situation that the owner can do. The laws are open to interpretation and discretion by the Animal Control Officer by design. You know, just like the tethering, you have to have a fifteen-foot tether. But if you've got a five-by-eight dog pen, that that dog is standing outside, it's not in the law that that dog can't be in that pen. So, you know, you have to look at the situations on it. But I, you know, I get tired of our Animal Control Officer getting vashed every morning. I know he's out there doing the best job that he can do with the resources he has. You know, I'm all for having more resources, but we all know what, how you give more resources.
Mr. Dingus, would you be willing to let Ms. Taylor help y'all maybe plan some fundraisers so you can get some more resources or whatnot?
We're willing for volunteers to be at the shelter all the time. We are not willing to make partnerships that we get vashed on social media with. We want partners, not investigators. I mean, we're, I don't know what she's talking about, that you can't go into the shelter during open hours. Other than the Animal Control Officer and Leader Control Officer can't be there all the time. But we have shelter workers that are there. But yeah, we're open to discussions.
What's the process for becoming a volunteer at the shelter?
There's a form that you fill out.
Just a form?
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
She won't speak.
You're not allowed to address me to things you said or no? Or is that over?
Citizen expression has been closed, but you can, you're more than welcome to talk with Mr. Dingus during recess. And it goes for anyone. If y'all have any additional comments, we will take a short recess here shortly where you can discuss things with us. Sorry. All right, moving on to public hearings. We have a public hearing, two public hearings scheduled. One, or sorry, the first one will be for a special use permit for parcel fifty-a-dash-twelve, New Leaf Energy for William Johnson III. Go ahead and open that public hearing.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
This will be the last time you see me for a while. I received inquiry about a special use permit for a solar generating at the, by New Leaf Energy on the William Johnson farm. I gave each one of you a packet. That should be the presentation. They took, we, in this process, we rewrote the solar ordinance for the zoning portion, zoning ordinance. And when we finished that, they, New Leaf presented to me a copy of their compliance with the ordinance. It has several points on it that you have to comply with. And they, at the same time, they submitted an application for a special use permit. If you look at it, there is the application. It's in your all's packet. Because you're like me, you can't see very well.
It didn't, it didn't make it to our packet, Mr. Gilmer?
Sir?
We don't have the, we don't have the presentation.
Yeah, you do. You should, I gave everybody a copy.
I didn't get the.
I put them on the.
Sorry. It's on the tablet.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah. Sorry, I got in a little bit.
Okay. Anyway, there's the application. There is where it's located in the county. The county map showing the approximate location. If you'll look at it, that gives you a better idea of where it's at. And there is the partial that it actually lies on. There is the aerial view of the location of the aerial location of the solar farm where they wanted to put it. There is actually a better rendition of it showing partially the ridges and valleys and everything we need to do. There shows that this lies in an agricultural residential district, zoning district. And if you look at it, that says that it has to have a special use permit. And that's the reason for a special use permit. The adjoining property owners were notified by letter, certified letter. And so everybody, that's where it's at. Got any questions?
Was there a lot of opposition against it?
Sir, ma'am?
Was there a lot of opposition against it?
I have received several phone calls both ways. One of the adjacent property owners, Mac Pearson, actually died during the period that we have a process. And he called and he wasn't for the process, wasn't for the special use permit. Other than that, there's just various people have called me and talked to me about it. I want to introduce Tim Williams. He'll be taking my place as zoning administrator. So if you've got any questions, you can direct it to him. Any more questions?
I would make a comment. Thank you for your service, for many years of service.
I appreciate that. Been here two or three years.
We appreciate you.
The folks from New Leaf or Mr. Johnson, do y'all want to go up and give a presentation? Speak.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. Thanks for your time this morning. I'm Jessie Robinson, project developer with New Leaf Energy. This is Quentin Wood, our project engineer. And we're representing Mr. Johnson, who's here today for a proposed solar project on his property off of Ryco Memorial Road. So New Leaf Energy, we have been operating for about forty years as a solar development company. We started with three brothers in California and have expanded. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty employees now. And we've been developing solar across the country, like in Massachusetts, Illinois, New York, California, and Virginia. There are different types of solar projects that can exist. What the project is today that we're applying for would fall under community solar or it's called the Shared Solar Program in Virginia. So those projects are five megawatts or less. They connect to the local grid and they allow folks to subscribe to the project and receive a credit on their utility bill. Community solar is sort of designed to allow folks, if you can't have solar on your rooftop or your property, it's still a way to be able to participate and receive some benefits. So that would be where this project falls under. And this just also defers or gives differences between small scale, which is what this project would fall under, and utility scale. If you've heard both of those. This project connects to the distribution lines, which is the photo on the top left, like the lines that run along the grid. We would work with Appalachian Power. They're currently studying the project in terms of like what upgrades need to happen. We would pay for those upgrades. Appalachian Power would complete the work. Utility scale is different. Those are usually larger and they connect to like the transmission lines. So this is not utility scale.
This slide here focuses on the panel composition for these particular solar panels. There's been some discussion primarily around, you know, is it going to leach? Is it going to leak out? These panels, and it kind of gives you a quick glimpse, you know, from the aluminum frame to tempered glass to actually having the modules that are also encapsulated by another film. These are actually a solid-state material to where if something were to happen to it, it's going to fracture. It doesn't break off and fall into pieces like your normal glass would. So it actually stays intact. This slide here, we get some frequently asked questions stemming off of the panel composition. Do the panels leach? Again, they are solid-state, so they are designed to just kind of fracture. So there's nothing in there that's going to leak out even from the rain and things of that nature. If it was fractured, say during a hailstorm, you had rain coming after, you don't have to worry about anything leaching out of the panels. The panels that we also use are tier-one panels. And what that means is that there's a twenty-five-year warranty on those particular panels. The panels are produced by reputable manufacturers, typically the top two percent within the solar industry. And again, these are, you know, they're designed and tested to withstand extreme weather conditions. So they're made to be placed out there for an extended period of time. Another common question that we get is what happens if the panels are damaged? So these facilities are monitored in real time and we would notice a drop in the production of the system, which would prompt having an inspection. Or if, you know, if there's, let's say, you know, the hurricane came through, obviously there'd be an inspection as well. And that would prompt us to go out and do the inspection and see. And if there was a, let's say there was a panel that was damaged or malfunctioning, our operator would take that down and replace that panel. And then we would then dispose of the panel at our cost in order to ensure that the facility's up and running. And what I did was I actually reached out to Waste Management within the area, talked to them. And, you know, just regarding the panels, if we wanted to, we could dispose of that at the ECO landfill down in Tennessee. Another question that we get is flood concerns, erosion concerns from these solar facilities. We actually work with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality regarding stormwater and land disturbance permits. And interestingly enough, the solar panels within this state, they consider them to be impervious. And so typically our stormwater is a little bit overdesigned in comparison to other states. And the big takeaway with the stormwater regulations is that the site, post-development, the amount of water released has to be equal to or less than what the pre-development is. And that's just to ensure that there isn't any type of erosion, downgrade it, and that we're not causing any type of impacts to any downstream properties. This is just a quick picture of some of our existing facilities. These are up in New York. The picture on your left is actually a fixed tilt system, which is being proposed for the Ryco project. And all that this means is it's going to be stationary. It's going to be set at a fixed angle in order to capture and convert the sun's energy into electricity. And then on the right-hand side, just kind of gives you a general idea for a layout of a facility up in New York State. These photos here on the left, it kind of looks black in the picture. Left photo there, that's a transformer on the right-hand side of that. Transformer is just an electrical cabinet, breakers, different types of circuits, communication, equipment, things of that nature. And that sits on the concrete pad, generally located within the center or else fairly close to the center of the facility itself. The right-hand photo is the string inverters. So the string inverters are what's used in order to convert it from the DC to the AC current. And those inverters take a couple of different rows of panels themselves, converts it over, and then runs it into the transformer where it's then stepped up and runs out to the distribution line. And the nice thing with the string inverters is that you can actually isolate certain areas of the facility so you can still be operating if you have to do any type of maintenance or your entire system doesn't have to go down.
Mr. Gilmer kind of gave an idea of this in his presentation as well in terms of, this is just a snapshot of where the project is located off of Ryco Memorial Road. And where it says project location is where on the parcel the panels will be positioned. Couple of reasons why we chose this particular site. Topography really helps with shielding the visibility of this project from surrounding neighbors and from the right-of-way. There's sort of like a bowl in this portion of the parcel where we're putting the project. And so that helps it as a lower elevation than surrounding areas, which helps shield it. So we don't expect anyone to be able to see this. It's also located more than four thousand feet back from the road. Very remote. We aren't impacting wetlands or floodplains with this layout. And we also, our solar facility is not impacting pre-farm land with the location on this parcel. There's also the interconnection infrastructure we need at this site. Like I said, the distribution lines are existing here, which is a key feature we need for interconnecting our project. And it's in the Appalachian Power territory area, which is a requirement for the shared solar program. So we're eligible. And then, of course, this is allowing Mr. Johnson to supplement his income on his property. And he's going to be able to continue farming and this is just another source of income for him. We conducted community outreach in October. We sent a couple of mailers to surrounding neighbors and had an ad in the newspaper for two weeks. We had seventeen attendees at the meeting. And one neighbor knew they weren't going to be able to attend, so they called us and we met with him at his property to talk about concerns he had. He was worried he might be able to see the project. And after meeting with him, he no longer had concerns because he was, he's not going to be able to see it. We also received five letters of support from surrounding neighbors for this project, which were mailed into the county. And these are the locations of those letters. You can see that they are all surrounding the project and close to the project.
So this slide here, what I did was I ended up using the county's GIS and overlaid our facility on there. So you can kind of see the different adjoining neighbors. And to the left, I actually have the setback distances. And these are the minimum distances in the general direction. So on the northeast side there, you have Mr. Johnson's son and the, I believe, the Hill property. And that's about a hundred and thirty-eight feet. The county ordinance is a hundred-foot setback. And again, it gets a further way from a hundred and thirty-eight feet as you work your way around the facility. On the northwest is the Ross property and the facility sitting back over twelve-hundred feet. On the southwest, the property, our facility, about Terry Fields's farm, land area. And the facility's setback three-hundred-and-eighty-four feet from there. And keep in mind, the parcel's also very long. The way the boundary's laid out is it actually tends to follow the run. So that's why I used the USGS topo map. It helps illustrate that. It helps illustrate that the property lines are up on the ridges and the facility is set down into the bowl area of Mr. Johnson's property. Just due to the size, I had to cut it into two different slides. So this is the southern portion of the property. And again, you can see Rycoque Memorial Road down towards the bottom. And the facility is forty-three hundred feet set back from the road as a crow flies. Project overview, again, it's a four-megawatt AC system. There are not gonna be any batteries on this facility at all. It's just gonna be solar. So it'd be generating power from sun up to sun down. It is a fixed tilt system. We're talking thirty-five acres of the facility is gonna be fenced. And then outside of that, we're gonna have about nine acres of stormwater and including our utility and access roads for our easement, that forty-three hundred foot to get up to the facility. As far as tree clearing goes, it's very minimal. There's maybe a couple of trees out there. And like Jesse had said, the project, the facility itself is actually sited outside of any prime farmland. So I know that was something that was important to the county. This is a conceptual landscape plan. So we're looking to utilize native grasses primarily. We will be using pollinator species within the panel area in the inner rows and also kind of along the perimeter of the fence line. And again, the key point to this facility is that we're utilizing the topography for the visual, for shielding the site from any type of visual impacts. And then, of course, it also meets the proximity requirements as well. It's, you know, well over a mile from any airport. There aren't any type of other solar facilities in this area. And it's located away from, you know, the vistas, the blue ways, and things of that nature that, you know, the county has concerns with. So in our packet, we had conducted glare study. So the yellow area is the outline of the solar project. The purple dots are the observation points, which are homes. The blue lines is the Castile Hollow Road and then also the Flint Den Lane. And a third party had used a program that was helped and developed by the FAA for glare observation. And what it does is it actually uses the location of the facility and it models the sun three sixty-five at one-minute intervals. And as it tracks the sun going through, it'll indicate whether there's any glare coming off of the panels. And as a result of the study, there is no glare coming off of the facility at these observation points or along the road. These next couple of slides is just visual sim. So this is a 3D rendering of what the facility would potentially look like if it was to be constructed. The way that these sims are put together is that we provide a CAD file of our design to a third party. They then use public data from VGEN USGS, which has the existing topography along with tree heights. And they use that in order to illustrate and replicate kind of what the existing conditions look like to give you a better visual as to what the facility could look like. This is just kind of a zoomed-in portion. You can see the facility kind of in the gray, sitting in the bowl. And down in the bottom right-hand corner is the access road. It's working way back towards Rycoque Memorial. This is just a view of the facility from the north looking south with Rycoque Memorial Road off in the background. This is a photo kind of hovering over top of Rycoque Memorial Road. There would be the improved access road. And you can see the utility poles coming down through. That would be the point of interconnection to where we would be exchanging the power generated with APCO. So that's where there would be just additional meters and equipment put in place per APCO in order to ensure the safe exchange. And this slide here is just a couple of cross-sections. The top one kind of runs generally north to south along the valley. And the bottom one runs generally east to west. So you can kind of see how the facility sits down in that bowl. So as part of our due diligence for this project, we did conduct quite a bit of environmental studies prior to coming in front of you. We did do a phase-one ESA so that it looked for any type of wrecks or other types of hazardous materials out on-site prior to moving forward the project. We also conducted a wildlife survey through US Fish and Wildlife, DCR, and DWR in order to identify any type of threatened endangered species. We also hired a third-party vendor to go out and do a wetland and stream delineation, which was included as part of our packet. And as Jesse had noted, our facility will not be impacting any wetlands or streams. I believe the closest stream is down towards the beginning of our Rycoque Road, which we won't be impacting. In addition to that, we also ran a V-CRIS, which is with the Department of Historic Resources, to see if there was any type of archaeological or architectural resources on-site that would be impacted. And if the project were to be approved today, some additional measures that we take is obviously our stormwater and land disturbance permitting, which would go through VA DEQ. As, you know, as I discussed, we focus in on water quality and also runoff as part of that. And then we'll also do a soil analysis or geotechnical survey out there to where we'll be doing soil bores and also test pits associated with our stormwater basins and in order to determine the appropriate depth for the foundations for those solar panels. So that would be something that'd be conducted after this. This is just a quick snapshot of the V-CRIS. You know, a half-mile buffer out from the facility, there wasn't any type of architectural resources or archaeological resources, you know. And we actually used the entire parcel within a half-mile of the facility. This is the Threatened Endangered Species Review with the different buffers. So as you can see, the facility is located outside of any type of threatened endangered species. And there's no permitting requirements or nothing like that since we're clear. Construction of these facilities typically takes six to eight months. I kind of broke it on down to give you a quick idea, you know, primarily your site work, ENS, land disturbance, put the road in, and getting it prepped for the actual panels to be installed is about three months. The facility work is gonna be kind of running your electrical wires, getting the panels mounted, setting the transformer, getting all that kind of put together is about another three months. Then there's about a one month of just kind of running through testing and inspecting. Our typical construction hours for this is your seven to five, Monday through Saturday. And again, we're willing to work with the county. If there's a certain, you know, timeframe, if you'd rather have, you know, eight o'clock to five o'clock on a Saturday, we're willing to work with you on that. As far as getting equipment there, with that being a VDOT road, we'd be coordinating with VDOT in order to get the appropriate hauling permits. And they would direct us onto the best path to get out there with our vehicles and construction equipment. We did talk to VDOT already about the existing road. They did look at the driveway. They didn't have any concerns regarding access in or out from that location. Once the facility is up and running, the project lifecycle, and this is as part of our package too, we did include the redacted lease. It's a twenty-year minimum lease with five-year extensions, up to forty years total for this particular project. It is operated twenty-four-seven. We anticipate probably biweekly to monthly visits out on-site. And again, that's, you know, additional visits may be required if we notice any type of drop in voltage or anything that would prompt additional inspections. As a result of the operation-maintenance, you're looking at two to four long-term jobs associated with the maintenance of the vegetation and then also just kind of maintaining the facility itself. At the end of the project's life, we would be responsible for decommissioning the facility. But however, prior to that, and as a safeguard, the county does have a decommissioning bond that would be put into place. And that would be held by the county prior to going to construction, so prior to getting site or building permits. That bond would have to be in place. And the bond is then renewed, I believe, every five years, if not earlier, in order to capture any type of inflation costs. And the bond itself is similar to like an estimate for building a facility. We know how many panels are there. We know what the steel is. And we'll give a, the professional engineer will put together an estimate in order to actually remove that material, restore the land, reseed it, including not only the above-ground but also the subsurface material as well, such as your conduits and the foundations. Again, our project, we do use the Tier One panels. And these are considered to be non-hazardous panels. So as far as disposal goes, bulk material of these solar facilities is metal, copper, conduit, a lot of that's recyclable. And actually Bedford County is actually putting in a solar manufacturing facility. And then we'll be expanding it to a recycling facility as well, just within the state. But there are some other recycling facilities within the U.S. currently. And we foresee more coming as the solar industry matures. The system removal, we anticipate anywhere from four to six months. And again, you know, we're responsible for the decommissioning of that facility and the restoration. A briefly touch on stormwater management. Again, the water quality is something that we have to work with, with DEQ through their VRRM, which focuses then on reduction of nitrates and phosphorus coming off of the soil. In order to address that, we implement certain structural BMPs such as stormwater basins and channels in order to address that. The other side of the stormwater is, again, the quantity. When we design these facilities, there's a certain amount of water that comes off of the site as it currently exists. And we have to design that to be equal to or less than once the facility is up and running in order to ensure that we're not causing any type of erosion or impacts or flooding to any downstream properties.
And before I cover this slide, I realized the clicker skipped over a slide previously. So I'll just mention that, obviously, the solar ordinance is new to the county. We're one of the first projects coming in front of you. But there is existing solar in the county already, which I may be aware of. The Clinch River Medical Clinic has solar on-site. They were able to apply, or not apply, they were just by right. So they didn't have to come in front of the county. And I think that project's about point five miles from the Clinch River. So just wanted to mention that. But this is a question we get often from community members. So I went ahead and included it as a slide, questions about like, will this project affect property value? We've had third-party folks like Colin Resnick, which is the accounting firm, conduct studies on this. What they do is they look at projects across the country and in Virginia. They look at projects that have been built. And they look at what was the sale price of homes before that project was built and after. And they have found no impact on sales price. And the picture here, that was an Isle of Wight County project that they looked at. In terms of benefits to the community, like I mentioned with shared solar, folks will be able to subscribe to the project and get a credit on their bill, which we're estimating at ten to fifteen percent. And we have a proposed condition that I'll cover in a moment here. But we would look to folks in Scott County first to get subscriptions before going elsewhere so that people closest to the project have the first opportunity for that benefit. This project, four megawatts, it will produce enough power to power about four hundred homes. And we also are subject to real estate tax and personal property tax for the county. So the property, if it were to continue with its current use of ag over forty years, it would bring in about twelve thousand dollars in taxes to the county. With solar on the property, it would bring in four hundred twenty-one thousand as an estimate to the county. Also, with this solar project, it's bringing in tax revenue, but it's not putting a strain on water and sewer resources from the county, increasing population for more strain on schools. There's not an increase to traffic in the area. And we're covering things at our expense, like upgrading that distribution line. So that is more reliable for folks along it. So some benefits from that. And also having solar, having diverse energy in a county and just like more sources of energy can encourage more people to come for development needs. That's a big topic right now with data centers and things like that. So that could be another benefit to the county. So I just wanted to cover these three conditions that we're proposing and we would like to be included on the permit for this project. The first one being, I mentioned it already, that we would look to folks in Scott County first for subscriptions for the shared solar program before going elsewhere. So folks here have that first opportunity for that benefit. Also, we talked with the Duffield Fire and Rescue Department, Mr. Carter. And given that they're in Duffield and our project's in Duffield, we, in talking with him, learned that they could really benefit from some funds to help support insurance needs with their staff. That's been a large issue that he's been facing. And so we are gonna just voluntarily pay forty thousand dollars to the Duffield Fire and Rescue Department to help cover those needs and just as another benefit for the community. And then finally, this is a long condition that I'll just summarize. It came out of discussion from a neighbor at the planning commission meeting who was concerned about the water quality of, there's a spring located on Mr. Johnson's property that he lets folks use to fill up for potable water needs. And there was concern about like quality of that water since our access road is near but not touching that spring. And the system's about four thousand feet north of it. So we're proposing that we'll do some tests of that spring water before construction and after construction to make sure that it's still within the potable range. And then every year after that for the first five years. And if it still looks within the potable range, then every five years following, we will continue to test that water just to make sure there's no change. And finally, obviously, it's not a question of if solar can come to the county because there is that solar ordinance. It's more like, does this particular site work well within the ordinance? Does it comply with the ordinance and meet the intent? So we just called out some items from the ordinance such as setbacks, which we far exceed for the right-of-way and we in-far exceed as well. Property lines, we will meet for noise from the property line as well as height of the solar panels. There will not be an impact visually with this location. Where you, given what we've mentioned before, the topography, there's no glare. We have an anti-glare coating on the panels. We're not impacting prime farmlands, which is another consideration in the ordinance. No more than ten percent is what the ordinance calls. And this project will not be, it's not located near nor visible from blue ways, byways, vistas, overlooks. So we meet and or exceed the ordinance's requirements. And this project, like I said, would help just diversify some energy resources in the county, add some more energy, and could encourage more development in the future. So, thank you.
Questions from the board?
This project, a couple of things I would say. This project is thirty-five acres. Any expansion would require new permitting? The business plan for your ownership going forward, can you predict how long your company will own the project?
Yep. So newly, we're a development company. We don't have construction capabilities. So we'll get the project ready to like starting site plan review. And then we'll sell it to one of our trusted buyers. We have like a small pool that we work with on repeated transactions for projects. There are a couple that we've sold, eight of our other projects in Virginia to already that we'll probably look to first. And then they would, they would take it through site plan review, construct it, and own it long-term. And I think per the ordinance, the county would be notified of that ownership change.
Any agreements that you make or conditions that you've set out here, they would be honored by those potential buyers, correct?
Yep. Yep. Because anything on the conditional use permit, whoever is with the project company must follow those requirements.
You said about how many houses would be powered?
About four hundred homes.
One hundred?
Four hundred.
Four hundred. That's what I thought you said earlier, but I wait for your...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The life of the project, how long is that? Twenty-five years?
The life? Did you say the life? Probably up to forty.
Forty years?
But your initial lease is twenty with the option to extend?
Option to extend with, by your extensions, yes.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmer, did you have something to say? I'm sorry.
I've adopted a motion and my representation at the planning commission voted not to recommend this project.
Okay. Ms. Darnes, what was the split on that vote?
The vote was 4-3, and then afterwards, I had a, it was 5-2, and afterwards, I had a planning commission come and meet with me. The vote was kind of confusing. Everybody was kind of confused by the vote, and they actually voted the, they wanted the project to go, so they actually voted the other way. So actually, it would have been a 4-3 vote had the confusion not have been a factor.
4-3, far?
It would, the vote wouldn't have changed. It was not to recommend. Instead of 5-2, it would have been 4-3.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Terry Fields. I guess I've joined the largest part of the land next to this proposed solar farm. The land in question is what I call Hickory Flats, goes down into a bowl and go down into a great spring that people get water out of, but that's probably one of my major concerns, but also, there is a noise level from these inverters goes DC to AC. I don't want that noise later. But the location of solar farms and other energy-producing facilities is perhaps the single most important detail among to be considered making decisions about approval or denial of special use permit. Number one, require that absolutely no toxic or carcinogenic material will be utilized in any part of the construction process or operation or decommission of the facility. Strengthen the opportunity for, of those owning property or living closest to the proposed site to have their concerns heard and addressed before the application is approved. Caves, fissures, sinkholes near the site, this should be strengthened streams, sites that generate runoff into the above ecological, fragile areas. Rycove is one big car system. You can't go very far without finding a sinkhole. You know, and they talked about testing water. It's too late when you get these into the water system. Myself, I'd rather have my health than all the gold and silver. You know, I just don't want it located in Rycove. I don't think it's a car system. Maybe there's places that, that it can be used, but these panels are coming from Southeast Asia. They use, you know, I researched these slave labor to get these materials. They are touted as being safe, but however, this claim is misleading. It's not uncommon for the glass panels to become cracked or broken due to natural, natural events like storms. When rain falls on the broken solar panel, it carries lead and other materials like carcinocanium, copper, and aluminum down into the soil below. Over time, polluted soil is washing the nearby sources, streams, lakes, wells. In this way, lead, cadmium spilled from solar farms can contaminate just not the ground immediately below, but also our crops, drinking water supply. Despite the potential for public health risks, this problem is not being addressed with the strength and urgency needed. You know, I just don't think it's the place. I have got a lot of signatures of people just in the, in the Rycove area. You're more than welcome to that and with their name and addresses if you would wish to see these people that are against it.
I'd like to see. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask newly a question, please.
Absolutely. You don't need my question for that.
If something does happen to the panels and they do break, how long does it take you all to get there on site to fix those?
Are you talking after a storm event?
Yeah.
Such as a hurricane?
Yeah.
We would probably end up sending somebody, you know, within the next couple of days in order to open and just check on the facility.
So we're looking at 48, 72 hours?
Probably 24, 24 to 72 hours more likely. It also depends upon, you know, if you have major access to the trees now, things like that.
Okay.
When the hurricane keeps throwing, a lot of people have problems getting back into that. Again, with these typical panels, they all have a safety sheet. For anyone who's been in the manufacturing business, understand that there is a technical sheet that breaks down components of these panels. They address any type of safety issues associated with these panels, such as like you have, I'm going to go away from solar, if you're dealing with gasoline, that has an SDS sheet, so what happens to your eyes, you have to take care of that. So all these panels that do come, they have an SDS sheet, which are to address all that, give you all the components to break down that, and like everyone said, these are T1 panels, these are hazardous panels. The discussion we're led, led as usual, soccer electrical components, it's a very small fraction of the composition of these panels. Primarily, these panels are silicone, which is made out of sand, and they are layered and are solid-state, so there is any type of vulnerability for that.
Thank you.
One other question about that. If these panels aren't manufactured outside of the United States, they still have to meet the EDA or EPA requirements, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So even panels are manufactured outside of there, and a lot of the stuff will be received in the U.S. isn't manufactured from overseas. That's just how it is. But yeah, they all have the SDS sheet. They all have to meet the EPA's guidelines for whether it's considered hazardous or not hazardous, or you know, the whole of the technical panels.
We also have, the Inflation Reduction Act includes some tax credits. It's not like grant money, but just you can stay on your taxes if you procure, procure panels domestically. So we're incentivized to do that, and that would be our, our goal. It would be a matter of compliance there.
So there is incentives to buy them, Eric?
Right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's a question. Next thing, you know, they, I know, they sound good. Like I guess they use car selling to me, but they talk about 10, 15 percent off your electric bill. I get my electric bill from Appalachian Power. I mean, people whose first, haven't heard anything from Appalachian Power myself. Is anyone here from Appalachian Power? I don't get my bill from Greenleaf. I get it from Appalachian Power. I haven't heard anything saying that they would lower your power bill, and that's if you sign up. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
You need, Terry? Do you need your papers back for your signature?
You know, I don't, if you, if you wish to.
I mean, I just didn't want to run out and leave them.
Okay, no, I don't.
I did have a question for newly. You said there would be one test per year for five, first five years, and then every five years after that. Is it possible to do more frequent sampling in the early year or two years of the project?
Yeah, I mean, we're open to that. Like, what are you thinking?
Well, he had a concern about the waterfall, so I just, I don't know the time period, but I think initially, there was some concern maybe once every six months for the couple of years.
Yeah, so the condition was put together, I have one between Department of Health, and what they do for testing, and actually, they do just one test every year, beginning and then after, then actually, the initial test after is good. They then recommend every five years. However, we decided to put it down as every one year. You could do it biannually if you wanted to for the first five years. That's completely up to you.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that wish to express an opinion on this special use permit?
I have a question.
If you wouldn't mind just coming up and, sorry, I'm trying to make this a little bit.
Well, I'm not from Rycove, but my question is, after they test it, and if the water's bad, then what? I mean, is there, is there any going back and making the water purer again after it's?
Yes, ma'am. Their bond includes any kind of cleanup that would have to be done for that and.
And the soil, all that stuff in the soil.
Yes.
Dr. Donald Thurston, there's a couple of other things to consider. This would be like a 34-acre concrete slab to begin with. Habitat totally blocks off. My question would be on the thermal index on these solar panels and how far they're raised above the ground and how much temperature impact it would be seasonal below the solar panels. A couple of things to think about would be the annelids, worms, and things like that, on the change in the habitat and desirability for wildlife. Other bad concerns are things like abatted mites, cheaters, and goodies like that, and numerous ticks. It would give it almost a habitat that they could come in and survive the adverse temperature changes and would increase the index. I'd recommend that people working there use at least permernone on their equipment and permethan products to keep the little arachnids and the spiders away. So it will change the habitat. It'll change the rodents, the lagomorphs, you know, rabbits and things like that, being able to use depending on the height and temperature. So it's something to think about. It has some good thoughts, but there's always some other repercussions. People don't look at the bigger picture. Anytime you change a habitat, you change everything.
Would it be any different than planting trees out there?
Pardon?
Would it be any different than planting trees out there?
You cut anything, you have succession, you have changes, you have land use, animal use changes, everything occurs. So often, we think of one thing, we don't look at the bigger picture. So that's, would be my concern, and I'm not getting into other things, but my expertise is diseases and basically vector profiles, so that was my concern in bringing it up. Not being negative, my person would rather see a small modular nuclear facility put in, would have a lot greater impact, less problems, and a lot more return. The revenue, serving on the equalization board for this county, we desperately need to stop losing our best product, our people, our youth, and have something to bring them here and be able to make money. Anything else?
Sorry, that was my only question.
Mr. Chairman, just as a note on your tablet, there was letters of support uploaded as well. That came in after the planning commission meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I believe there's one from Energy Ride. Where were the other ones from?
Don't tab it.
They're from citizens in that area.
Okay, okay. Is there any other public comment? You want to close public comment? Is there any discussion amongst the board?
I would recommend, if adopted, that they have the first two years, six months sampling water quality for the spring.
They're going, they're going to, they're going to test it before. They're going to test it.
They already recommended that.
Right, and then they're going to test it.
It was before, after, and then?
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah, I was trying to.
Should do it every six months for a couple of years to check, see if it's always up to snow.
The spring, the spring is owned by Mr. Johnson, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there are several people that you let use in the community.
Yep. I've seen them out there getting it, tanks and stuff for farm use and seattle.
I think he generously does that.
I live three or four miles from him, I take.
I just want to note that, sorry, are we done with that one? I just want to note that four megawatts is a, is a lot of power to be introducing to the grid. You know, Tempur-Pedic down there hires, I don't know how many people, they use about two megawatts. So that's expanding our power capacity going forward, and that's something that we're desperately going to need if we're going to grow as a county.
I agree.
I'd add that, you know, I, I actually went down and visited the site with Mr. Johnson, and I like where the project is. I like that it's, you know, we, we talk about his farmland, but I don't feel like that, that part of his farmland is anywhere near prime. I don't think that it's, he's got his cattle on it now. Don't think you could put any kind of crop because of the way that it rolls and the rock, the bedrock in there. It's a mile, we were on the road for a mile off the main highway.
Has anyone on the board not been out there?
Has everybody, has everybody?
I've not been, but I know where it's at.
I've not been, but I've been on his farm before.
Okay. Yeah, because the pictures, you know, are one thing, but actually being out there, you know, you're, it's hard to visualize, for me to visualize just how far back it was. It's, it's pretty far back.
It is.
And I've been, you know, all around it and looking, trying to look over in that bowl, and there's just, I don't think there's any way you can look in that bowl unless you stood on top of fence poles.
You know, that's the one thing with this, with this project. You know, I understand the concerns, and I've talked to many, many people over this, and I think the landowner should have just a smidge more say-so in what he or she does with their property. And if that's something that does not affect in a negative way, then I, I have a hard time saying, thinking that we're saying, telling him what he can and cannot do with his property. I wouldn't want anybody, I don't like people telling me what I can and do, can and can't do with my own property.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm not far solar farms that is around houses and stuff, but as far as this solar project, I think it's a good project because it's back away from everything, and I don't see anything wrong with it myself.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Any other question? Okay. Since there was a, since there seems to, there might be a disagreement with the planning commission, I want to read off a motion, and you all can take it up if you want to or, or not. But whereas the board supervisor finds the proposed solar project meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the issuance of a special use permit, including the requirement of zoning ordinance section 500-124 dot 1, that the proposal shall generally conform to the latest comprehensive plan of Scott County, and therefore pursuant to Virginia Code section 15.2-2232 subsection H, the board supervisor waives the requirements for substantial accord review by the planning commission, and further finds pursuant to zoning ordinance section 500-124-two, that the proposal shall have a minimal adverse impact of the surrounding neighborhood or community, the proposal having been evaluated with consideration given to the proposed conditions to mitigate any such adverse impacts. Therefore, now therefore, I move that the board supervisors approve the issuance of a special use permit for parcel 50-A-12 as requested by applicant Rogers Road Solar Three LLC for William Johnson III, subject to the conditions that were presented by Newly Energy, the applicant. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
Ms. Starnes, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Ms. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Skene?
Yes.
Mr. Bricky?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Magnus?
Yes.
And Ms. Addington?
Yes.
All right, with that one concluded, let's move on to the next public hearing. Public hearing to dispose of real property held by Scott County under an order of forfeiture, with said property ordered to be disposed of by judicial sale executed by special commissioner, and said property being 4533 Bristol Highway, Gate City, Virginia, tax map number 149-A-22. And I'll open public hearing on that. You wish to come and make a comment about that? Ms. Starnes, do you want to give us a little background, or give everyone a little bit of background on this particular property?
Yes, I'll do my best.
I know it's been a complicated and probably not the right way to do this, so please.
The property is located at 4533 Bristol Highway. It was, it came to the county through a forfeiture with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and it was held by Scott County in name only. The property was the former Kilgore Store, if people's familiar with that. We have to have this public hearing to dispose of that property. We do have a cash offer on it. There's a special commissioner that was appointed to handle that sale. So they did come to Ms. Kegley with the cash offer, and that would be accepted upon the board's approval of disposing of this property. And the proceeds from that would be, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Kegley, you can correct me, would be split between the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the sheriff's office after the county's expenses have been removed.
Any discussion amongst the board for this? Any motion to go ahead with it?
How much motion would go ahead with?
Okay. Everybody vote by saying aye?
Aye.
And that is public hearing B. All right. We'll take a brief 15-minute recess and meet back here. Thank you.
Okay. On your tablet, I also included an email that I received from Sue Smith, who is the housing authority director. Her board is requesting that the stipend be increased from $50 to $100 per meeting for the housing authority members. This was discussed in October 2023. At the time, those outside groups were getting $25 per meeting, and in October 2023, that was increased to $50 per meeting. Increasing this stipend for the housing authority to $100 per month would cost an additional $4,200 per year just for the housing authority.
Is their pay in line with the other boards that we have?
All the boards are the same. They actually requested, I believe it was $100 in October last year when the board took this up. And it was decided that they do $50, and instead of just the housing authority board getting the increase, it was all the boards would get the same thing. So they're, if you're on a board that gets a stipend and you opt to get that stipend, they're all currently $50.
Okay. So...
So if we did all the boards, what would the increase be?
Yeah, it's just $4,200 for just the one board. I didn't add it all across the board.
How many other boards are there? There's probably five or six that aren't there?
There's several, yeah. There's the planning commission. I think PSA pays theirs directly. Then you've got the housing authority. So there's different ones. There's regional jail, but it's more than the, this one, because it's a different type of entity. They were, I think 50's the most they've ever been. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you've been here longer than me. But during budget cuts years ago, they were reduced down to $25. Mr. Jeter may remember that. That's why they were originally reduced, was because of budget constraints.
Were they asking you to consider, or us to consider this in the next budget or next year?
The email didn't specify. I was assuming like now. That's how the email read to me, and I did include that on the tablet. It didn't specify in the upcoming budget year.
So do they have monthly meetings, or just one monthly meeting, or multiple?
Is that correct, Starnes?
One meeting a month.
And wasn't your understanding it was they will want the increase now, not during the upcoming budget?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
You assume, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, if you don't put a date on there, might as well, so that they want it now.
Yeah, it didn't specify that it was for the upcoming year.
Right. Yeah, I don't think...
I feel like it needs to stay the same, because it's not fair if we increase this board and not increase the other boards. And as of right now, I feel like it needs to stay 50.
And it could be something that you consider during budget, if you see that you have the money and you want to increase those across the board. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we may think about it during budget, but I don't see us having a pot of money that just springs up from somewhere.
That's always...
In the words... All right, so no action on this one. D, Web Road Route 662, request for abandonment. I'm sure you all got the emails, might got caught up in the spam filter for some reason, but the property owner out on Web Road, that's on both sides of the road, requests an abandonment of the road. Frida, do you want to give any more background to that as well?
I can. On your tablet, I also included some information about this. I found minutes from 1983 when this road was requested to be abandoned, and the board supervisors at that time denied the request. And that was because of some school bus issues. They used that road. And I also have pictures that Mr. Bricky took for me, the chief of Gate City Fire Department. There's a couple of them, and it's showing a fire truck trying to make the turn from Hill Station Road to Starnes Bluff Lane. Instead of, if this road was abandoned, they wouldn't be able to use that pass-through. It's just a shortcut road in that area. So I'll pass those around for you. I also included the letter that you received from Mr. Mrs. Test that owns the property that's on both sides of this road. If you wanted to pursue abandonment, the process would be to post notice at both ends of the road for 30 days and then hold a public hearing. I've also talked to Mr. Harmon at the school bus garage, and I think they do have, still have some concerns with the road was abandoned. And I also have communicated with the Virginia Department of Transportation Engineer. They don't have any opposition for abandonment, just for their sake. So those are just some things to take into consideration when you're looking at this.
I've got some calls on that road, and the people that got the property out in there that uses that road, the farmers use it, and the school bus uses it, and they do not want it closed.
That's outside of my area, but when I saw it come out in the Times News that they were trying to close it, I started calling, first of all Dexter Harmon, who's over the bus garage here, and he went out with some people and took a look at it. And I'm very familiar with it, back for 70 years. I used to help farm over there. And I've been in every field and on tractors, trailers going up through there, and there's absolutely no way that you can make the curve as you go down to Web Store, up going to Hill Station that way. Even back then, with a small tractor and a trailer, you couldn't make it. And now with these trucks these farmers have, and long trailers, they absolutely have to have the Web Road shortcut up through there. I'd say that road is over 100 years old, and it, right now, BDOT needs to go in there and put gravel down. But that road needs to stay where it is. And as far as buses, I lived where Mr. Thurston lived for a few years, and that was my grandmother's farmhouse. And I worked out of that for a long time. And I drove a bus in the county for 13 years.
I've got some calls on that road, and the people that got the property out in there that uses that road, the farmers use it, the school bus uses it, and they do not want it closed.
That's outside of my area, but when I saw it come out in the Times News that they were trying to close it, I started, I called, first of all, Dexter Harmon, who's over the bus garage here. And he went out with some people and took a look at it. And I'm very familiar with it back for seventy years. I used to help farm over there. And I've been in every field and on tractors, trailers going up through there, and there's absolutely no way that you can make the curve as you go down to Web Store, up going to Hill Station that way. Even back then, with a small tractor and a trailer, you couldn't make it. And now with these trucks these farmers have and long trailers, they absolutely have to have the Web Road shortcut up through there. I'd say that road is over a hundred years old. And it, right now, BDOT needs to go in there and put gravel down. But that road needs to stay where it is. And as far as buses, I lived where Mr. Thurston lived for a few years, and that was my grandmother's farmhouse. And I worked out of that for a long time. And I drove a bus in the county for thirteen years and taught over at Raco. And I left my bus parked there, and I'd have to go down, hit Web Road, and start picking up on Hill Station for a long time in a bus. So I know where Dexter and Billy drives the bus over there now. I know where they're coming from. And you cannot turn, if you came down from Kimbletown, from Starnes's Bluff, and looked for a place to turn, to turn that bus around to go back to Hill Station, you'd have to go all the way to Copper Creek, down to Miles Gillen's old store to turn around. There's no place to turn a bus. So that's my thoughts on it. We do not need to close this road. Danny, come on. Danny Calhoun.
I think I can speak thanks to, thanks for the great, Mr. Brickie's already covered most of it. My name is Danny Calhoun. First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you, County Administrator, all your board members, for the job you do. I know it's a tireless job. I know it, about ninety-five, I've worked in public before, about ninety-five percent of people that contact you is wanting something. And I know what you can't please all the people all the time, but hopefully common sense will prevail. Bill, do you have a picture of that? I don't know. If I could turn this around, monitor and point out, but here's the point. I mean, Mr. Brickie's, I was going to point out that he lived there. Danny Castile may be familiar with it, probably is, the rest of you is not. But if you're going to vote yes to close it, I ask one thing of you. Go over there and turn around at Web Store and come back and turn right. I have an extended cab or long wheelbase truck, pickup truck, I can't even make it being there without backing it. I own the farm on Starnes Bluff, I own the farm Bigfoot Club Lane. If that road's closed, if I'm coming from Starnes Bluff with any hay, equipment, anything, I have to go all the way, I would have to go all the way to Copper Creek. Down Copper Creek, the man will back up, back in Bigfoot Club Lane to my farm. So I mean, that's just where I'm coming from. But to me, of course, all y'all that sit in opposition, stand up, please. Now, I looked to see some of them, and I can see four or five, thank you, four or five that own property with a road to it. I own two parts of the road to it. That's not criteria for a road to be closed, in my opinion. But that's not the point here. The point is the safety of everyone traveling there. Now, if I could fly, I'd fly, you can't hear either. Maybe we, it would be nice if y'all did separate speakers to, then we could hear back here or I can hear you. I'm going back this way. We're coming down Hill Station Avenue. Well, I'm disoriented, I guess, here.
Right here is Web's road and...
Yeah, where it's going, what I'm going, two-two-six.
Over to your right, the big house down there, it's over from that.
Okay.
Right here.
All right, so I want to look at the other way. So here, I'm coming down Hill Station Avenue. And it proposed is that I would have to turn back. Now, I'm still backwards, I believe. Pull this other way, Bill, please.
Do you want, do you want where it hits the road on the other part?
If I'm coming down, I would be coming, I would have to turn right on the... Okay, if I'm coming on down here, this right here, you can see how sharp this curve is that I would have to, since being able to shoot up through here straight. Do you see there how straight that is with a tractor, trailer, or a big truck or whatever? There's no rest, I'll have to go a minute about that. But right here, you can see how sharp that curve is. Right there, right there would be ninety degrees, that's supposed to be a forty-five degree cat back. This road is, it comes around a curve here, and then it starts down a pretty good incline. It's coming up here, it's an incline if you're going to even go straight ahead. And you've got the really sticky nose out there in order to see the road going on down and back up toward Buck Jones. So what the deal is, if you voted yes, that will create one of the most hazardous intersections we've got down. Because there's no way that even in a car, you will go over the other lane to make a turn even.
Danny, that's probably a seventy-five to a hundred foot drop there, too, at that intersection, at least.
It's, well, I looked at that day, I thought maybe, and you've driven a bus, I thought maybe a bus might even bottom out. I don't believe it would, but it'd be close to bottoming out to try, you know, making that curve back there.
Well, Bill went over and looked at it.
Well, Bill, Bill drives a bus, that bus. And, you know, presently, I don't think there's a student lives back that way, but we don't know when there will be. And we don't know what the bus route might be from time to time, because over is like everything else, the numbers dropping and all that. Dexter is a bus garage foreman, over all the bus and routes and everything, so he's here in opposition, so that tells you a lot. But the main thing is, if you don't know and thinking about voting yes, please go over and don't take my word for it, take your own word for it. Turn at Web Store and go back. Just be careful, watch the intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And there will be children later on out there that they will have to be good.
And just to clarify for everyone, if we did want to abandon this road, we'd still have to have a public hearing. This was just a discussion on whether or not we should pick this up. But it sounded like we should not, as a board, pick this one up. Would anybody be opposed to that?
We need a motion to do that, Sam?
No, you just don't go forward.
Okay, we just won't go forward with that?
I don't think I see the road being some of the brush cut out from it.
Right.
And it needs gravel.
I did drive the road, and it hadn't been maintained.
And I will send in a work order to get some gravel and get those rotten whites cleared out.
Get it paid.
Maybe next year.
Get on the same year plan.
All right, with that one. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Donald Thurston. I have dubious pleasure of owning Web Store, and I'm the first house there, two-two-six. And it's suicidal to go to the stop sign and try to go up that hill. You cannot come in from the past, the right side, and make that maneuver. You have to go over to the left side of the road and try to turn and hope no one's coming forward. And furthermore, at the end of the day, as the sun's setting, you've got the sun right in your eyes as you come over that crest, and you can't see. So from a safety point of view, from a logistics point of view, and from a historical point of view, keep it. Now, I own the farm in Honeaker. I own the half mile on each side of the road. You know what I did? I put a COVID under the road, permission from DOT to take care of the problems, my animals and everything else passing. So that'd be my suggestion. Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to bookkeeping items.
Please appropriate eight-hundred ninety dollars and nineteen cents to park golf course merchandise for resale, one thousand dash seven-one-one-one-zero dash four-zero-six-zero-zero-nine, for a reimbursement received deposit at Treasury's office. Appropriate five-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents to sheriff's conferences and training, one thousand dash three-one-two-zero-zero dash four-zero-five-five-four-zero, for reimbursements received deposited, and appropriate three-hundred-fifty dollars to sheriff's repair and maintenance of vehicles, one thousand dash three-one-two-zero-zero dash four-zero-six-zero-zero-nine, for an insurance claim received deposited at Treasury's office.
Do we have a motion? I'm going to see it. Second.
Second.
Everybody in favor say aye?
Aye.
Before we move on to appointments, I would like to read something into the minutes. When I spoke for the motion for the Raco Solar Project, I did the wrong LLC. That's me looking at, there's something wrong, but it's Raco One LLC. I just want to make sure that that gets into the minutes, that's what we intended for that to be. All right, on to appointments.
And you have two positions for the Housing Authority. Philip Owens and Jack Compton have been serving. Jack Compton re- applied, and he's your only applicant.
So two positions on one re-. Does anyone want to nominate Mr. Compton for the...
I'll nominate Jack Speller, I mean, Jack Compton.
I'll make the motion nomination season, season to go, there for motion.
Everybody vote by saying aye?
We need a second. Oh, second.
Now, everybody vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Still need one more?
Yeah. All right.
Do you want that one re-advertised?
Yes, please. And if anybody knows anyone that wants to get involved with the county, please, I don't know.
Could you kind of describe what that position is?
The Housing Authority oversees like the HUD vouchers, and they have locations in Duffield and Gate City and Dungannon. And as far as what the board actually does, I'm not that familiar with. Ms. Kegley is...
Well, I was just wondering what the Housing Authority did. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, they oversee apartments in Duffield, Gate City, and Dungannon.
Moving on to County Attorney's Report. Ms. Kegley.
I'm happy to answer any questions you all have. I wanted to clear up something. I was asked to clear up something from last meeting when you all adopted the personal property tax exemption ordinance. There was confusion about the logging equipment wording. I sought more clarification, and the intent of the legislature, when they amended the code to add the logging exemption, logging equipment was to allow a local option to exempt logging businesses like farming businesses. So when you all adopted that ordinance with that language in there, that exempts logging businesses as well.
That was our intention. It was just muddled through everything. That's fine. Thank you, Ms. Kegley. Any other updates? It's good to hear that logging equipment and farm equipment will be...
What about the U.K. dealers with some of that also?
No.
So it will be taxed?
I don't think we have any authority to...
That's under the DMV, right?
Well, I don't think we have any authority to not tax.
If it's a farming trade, it's not.
Right.
It's exempt.
If it's anything with being, got to be numbered in, it's not a farm trade, then it's a...
Yeah.
Goes through DMV, because you got to get taken for it.
Right.
Got you.
All right, Ms. Tharnes, County Administrator report.
So your claims, you have green sheet in your folder. The general fund balance after claims is eighteen million, not eighteen million, nineteen thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. As you can tell by the comparison, we are above where we have been in the past years. We've not had any drawdown from the school system yet, and we have been investing those funds for interest. So a couple of things for the increase. As far as claims for the month total, early claims total nine-hundred-eleven-thousand, three-hundred-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. And current claims are three-hundred-thirty-three-thousand, seven-hundred-nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. So total claims for the month that you need to approve is one million, two-hundred-forty-five-thousand, twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. You do have a list of all claims over five thousand dollars. The majority of those this time are the payouts to EMS and the seven fire departments for their yearly allocations. We usually try to do the majority of those payouts in January after our tax collection. Money has come in, so you'll see that that's the majority of what you're seeing today in over five thousand. But if you have any specific questions, just let me know.
Any discussion from the board?
I make the motion we pay the bills.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under miscellaneous, I had some questions emailed to me by Mr. Skene, so I'll go over those. He did add the other ones that I did not put on the agenda for this month, so I'll go over those as well. The first question was update on meeting with legislators Kilgore and Puyan and goals for the 2025 legislative session. So on December thirteenth, county administrators and the city manager for Norton, as well as board chairs from Lee, Scott, Dickinson, and Wise in the city of Norton, had a Zoom meeting with delegate Kilgore and Senator Puyan. Each county and city took turns speaking about their key concerns for the upcoming legislative session. Each locality faces very similar concerns, or top concerns that were mentioned during the call were unfunded mandates and budget items that require a local match, funding for school resource officers, funding for fire and EMS, help with the cost of early voting, cell towers to fill coverage gaps, legislation to allow counties to have a one percent additional sales tax by referendum, and support for developing workforce housing. The Scott County Board of Supervisors authorized a letter to Governor Youngkin in September. That letter was sent to delegate Kilgore and Senator Puyan as well, and that listed what you all decided were your priorities when considering the upcoming draft budget, which is now being released by the governor. We are currently scheduling meetings in January with state agencies that are partners with Scott County, with the focus being BDOT and housing for Scott County. And question number two, trash committee update. We have not met since the last update, but we have ordered new cameras for five sites to upgrade those. We do have a tag reader component that's going to be installed at those sites as well. So that should help in those situations. The tag reader will be able to tell how many times a car enters or exits each site. We can, we've got some search options there that's going to be a new feature. Number three, the promise program update. Mountain Empire Community College will be here in February. Number four, preventative oversight on potential problems such as the Weber City tire fire. That was actually under DEQ, and they are, at the time of the fire, were under a plan to get rid of their tires. They had some DMV tires that were for resale, and then some waste tires as well. I have a budget request, once we start in the budget, that could possibly help with oversight of those problems. That'll be discussed during the budget later this year. And next, we have discussion on addressing citizens' questions following public expression at the Board of Supervisors meetings. In the past, during citizen expression, if someone came up to the podium and they had a question that could be answered that day, once citizen expression closed, then that question was usually addressed. Board members, you know, that you can respond to what someone says or you cannot. That's up to the board. It should not be used for specific board action at the meeting. If someone comes up and asks for board action, you don't have to take action on that item right then. You can postpone that till the next meeting and put it on the agenda. Such as if somebody comes up and asks for a domination for fireworks or whatever, you don't have to take action that day. It can be at the next meeting. And if someone's asking for a FOIA request, they need to go through our FOIA officer. A lot's going on at the meeting. There's a lot of moving parts. We don't want to miss a specific request for something. And I believe this question arose because a citizen asked for the expenses for the Teletext building. This board doesn't have that information. That would need to be requested from the Economic Development Authority. A lot of people come in and ask you all for things that are not under your umbrella. So if citizens have specific requests, those do need to come... umbrella. So if citizens have specific requests, those do need to come through FOIA. That way we have their contact information. We have somebody come up and say, I'm Sally Jo from Rocko, and I'm asking for such and such. That's all we have. We don't know their email address or their physical address to get them the information. So please follow the FOIA guidelines. Those are on our website. And then, like I said, if there's something that needs to be addressed, you know, this board can do that when citizen expression is closed after everyone speaks. You can have that conversation with them then. And then the next question, request made during meeting with Lena Wisco's annual call for projects. I did have a meeting with Lena Wisco staff on October the eleventh. We discussed recent smart scale application for the US 23 natural tunnel Parkway intersection. We also discussed our partnership with Virginia Tech on the comprehensive plan update. And we also discussed potential funding with the Appalachian Regional Commission and the Department of Housing and Community Development block grants opportunities for an undisclosed project at this time. And the next question, I believe that was all of us. Sally covered the other one. And I do have one other thing under miscellaneous. The Department of DEQ has a request that we select a primary and an alternate contact be selected for DEQ for each local government on a regional planning, as a regional planning area representative. They're looking for people who are familiar with local water systems, water supply planning, or otherwise deemed appropriate by the local government. I have reached out to Mr. Dishman. He would be interested in serving as the primary contact and John Broski as the alternate if it's your all's desire to select them for this.
Need a motion?
If you all are in agreement to put them on this planning committee, then yes.
I'll make a motion.
This is the first time this has ever been done on the local and regional water supply regulations.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Dishman and John Broski be put on DEQ committee.
Is there a second?
All second.
Everybody vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Because I had one thing to what Frida said about the meeting with Todd and Terry. I was there and asked about disaster mitigation. Now, I was not talking about money to come down from the state to take care of the hurricane. I'm talking about what we need in the future. We've talked to Lena Wisco and we've talked in here about needing generators and that type thing for the future, snows or whatever happens. And Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, Frida, he said that the governor had gone beyond what the House and Senate wanted to ask for from the federal government. And they're waiting for that to come back, correct?
Right. And we can put in mitigation projects. Myself and Neil and Mr. Ricky, Jeff Ricky, are working with FEMA for mitigation projects and generators are one of the things that we're discussing.
Okay.
So there is mitigation money as well as money to cover the cost for what disaster expenses we've already incurred.
Okay. Those people going to Richmond, not bringing that up at there. And the other thing, if you would, when you go to Richmond, find out about the natural tunnel money. The four million is supposed to come down for the swimming pool.
They are working on the design phase of that currently. So that is moving.
Okay. And Mr. Dishman has asked for the property down at Moxon Gap to go to the water department, TSA.
I don't know if he's made that formal request yet or not.
Do you know, Darrell?
I don't know where he has.
I know he mentioned that.
He mentioned it, but I don't know.
So that's another thing you might ask when you go up there, when you meet the DOD.
Seems like everybody wants that piece of property.
And they don't want to give it up.
Is that the one right there where the state shop was?
Yeah.
Where the trash cans used to be.
The county has formally requested the property where the waste site was.
Right.
We've asked.
I was wondering if they ever made a comment or you ever heard anything about that?
I haven't, but that has been formally done for that section. We didn't request the whole property.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Thorns for getting everything going with that meeting. We were able to kind of lead the way, I think, with the discussion with Mr. Kilgore and Senator Puyan. And I appreciate you for setting that all up. You were the primary person setting all that up, right?
Yes, correct.
And it benefits all of Southwest Virginia, all of us down here on the tip. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I did have one other question. On the budget report, the blue sheet that has starting budget and then usage, that first column, does that come from the commissioner revenue?
What blue sheet?
It's year-to-date budget report. It's got the budget and tracks over time, year-to-date utilization. Last column's percentage of usage. Does that first column, does that come through the commissioner's office? It's all your revenue from your taxes?
No, that comes through my office.
Okay.
The estimates are.
The estimates.
The estimates come from the commissioner's office. And then I put them into the budget from our office.
Yes, well.
Because we don't collect a hundred percent, so we don't budget a hundred percent.
Some of it is over a hundred, so I'm assuming that she's collecting more taxes than she projected.
The personal property is the one that is showing over a hundred percent. Real estate's at ninety-one, I believe, ninety-one.
Yeah, it's high rates. So it tells me that the commissioner's office is doing some things positive.
Is that the commissioner or is that Captain?
Well, I think it's, do you want to comment on that?
You can see an increase on her machine rentals.
Yes.
And the delinquents.
Yes.
Those are direct from her office.
Yep.
Sending out seven sixty-twos that had.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, but you'll see those, her efforts on the machine rental side, if you look at that budget.
We appreciate that. All right. If we're done with the county administrator's report, we'll move on to county department report. John Kilgore with Economic Development has been asked if we could go into closed session for the first part of this. Am I correct on this?
That's correct.
You should have a note player A five prospective industry.
Okay, yeah. I see it. Like I said, it's going, it's going to take me a little bit. But the board is going to move into closed session pursuant to A five prospective industry, Weber City. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll second it.
Second? On a motion by Darrell Jeter, due a second, then by Michelle Glover, this board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711 subsection
Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section two dot two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certificate. And whereas section two dot two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the county, by Scott County Board of Supervisors that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting. To which this certification resolution applies. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Ms. Addington?
Yes.
Ms. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Skeen?
Yes.
Mr. Minus?
Yes.
Mr. Breke?
Yes.
And Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
All right. Sorry.
I was waiting on your chair.
Yeah. That's my bad. I'm going to charge, so.
Thank you all for doing that. Appreciate you all taking the time earlier and give you an update, of course, on 2024. Some great things happened, of course, in Scott County economic development. Of course, the governor announced the VFP expansion, which is 1.5 million dollars and 50 new jobs for Scott County. And it's great to see them continuing to grow and to develop a workforce there in Duffield. We also continue to work with the Riverside Development, which has always been a mixed-use site with, of course, retail in the front and housing in the back and maybe some light industrial up toward the front as well. But we continue to work on that as a board and continue to focus on that. It's one of our main priorities.
Oops, sorry.
That's quick. Small Business Support, the EDA, we work with the Chamber to support small businesses. And we have a rural business enterprise loan program that we have. We also do ribbon cuttings. We also have a free 99 Chamber membership to new businesses. And of course, if there's any new workshops or anything, we always spread the word through the Chamber about that as well. Here's some ribbon cuttings that we had. Ah, that's quick. Grizzly Tattoo, and we had the Redstone Drive-In. All these happened in 2024, 23 Acts. Copper West Spa and Salon, 58 Flower Shop, Justin Manuel State Farm Insurance. We had the HMG Outpatient Diagnostic Center, and we had the Family Dollar, Dollar Tree in Duffield. We also announced, which is more of a tourism project, which was the Devil's Bathtub project cost on that was $317,000, and that was completed in 2024 with all the paperwork done. So with those ribbon cuttings and those jobs, you can estimate about $7 million in new investment and 70-plus jobs with the small businesses and, of course, BFP announcement. Now, BFP, they have three years to reach their goal, their 50 jobs, so they have three years according to the performance agreement they signed with the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund to the state. So we will continue to work with BFP and other industries, and it's always great to have those here that do the expansions. Between VFP and Temper, you're looking at a minimum of nine expansions that they've done since I've been here, and that is wonderful news for Scott County and every one of those. Here's some pictures of the Devil's Bathtub Trail. Improvements have been made. Had somebody walk it, you know, over the Christmas holidays, and I asked if the signs were still up, and they said, yeah, but they've got graffiti on them. So now what we should have done is put some cameras up with, you know, the signs. So anyway. So if you walk it, take pictures of stuff and send back to us, and we'll know, because a lot of times I'm not there a lot, and I walk it occasionally, but if you see something, let us know so we can report that to the Jefferson National Forest.
Did it get washed away or anything during that rain? Any upslides or anything?
No, they were up there after that, and they said it was walking, was still doing well. So they had those city steps that they created. They said all that was working well. So with eliminating some of those stream crossings, that really helped too for the trail. We also were able to help the Carter Fold with their 50th anniversary celebration. $140,000 in grants and sponsorships to help celebrate this 50th anniversary. This is internationally known venue. We have people from Europe, Canada, had South America represented, had somebody from Russia there one night. So you never know who's going to show up at the Carter Fold and listen to that music, and they increased attendance, and of course, it'll be great. This is a stepping stone to the 100th year of the Carter family, which will be celebrated in 2027. They did the recordings in 1927, so that Carter family started here. And a lot of those people, they were telling me why they came to this 50th year is they wanted to see where the original country music started. So they wanted to see it in its original state, so they visited the Carter Fold in Hiltons. We also were able to help with the Nicholsville Farmers Market, and of course, the county put 25,000 into that, so we were able to get an APID grant to the Virginia Department of Agriculture for a farmers market there. And that has been built, and that has been closed out as well, and this is what that looks like. They're right in the middle of town, so they do have a farmers market that they can advertise. And we also were able to work with the Scott County Regional Horse Association, and we're still doing that. We, the board voted to enter into a lease purchase agreement for an additional 12.69 acres for the Scott County Regional Horse Association. That's that L shape around their horse park you can see there. So we will, have not got that sign yet, still dealing with that. They're supposed to come in this afternoon, and hopefully we'll get that sign, and they will be taking over that, and it is a lease purchase. They will own it at the end of that.
Will there be any room left up there?
Yes, we have another 12 acres on the right side of that behind the Clint River Health Services. It's like an L shape on the other side.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, and that was initially, the county years ago through DHCD, they were able to develop this land through, with a grant from DHCD. And it not only developed this site, but it also developed the site where Temper sits today. So they developed that 42-acre site and this site with a million-dollar grant from DHCD. So that's how we got here in the first place, is that we were able to draw down some money on grants to get this property to develop. The same way we do on the other things, economic development, is develop the land and try to get somebody to locate. And through the, we do have the loan program. We've had 40 loans approved to date, about 744,000. That's 86 employees, and eight of those tourism-related, 22 retail, and 10 support businesses. And we received an additional $163,000 from the Rural Development to replenish those funds as well. So we've making that money turn over and workforce again. VC to C Capital Grant Program, they grant up to $10,000, and it requires matching funds from the business. They have to turn in a business plan, work with a small business development center, same way they do with our loans. We have four Scott County businesses receive grants totaling $40,000 as Blue Line Treats, Franco's Gate City Bistro, and the Edison, and Revolutionary Market that's up in Hiltons, Virginia. So all those receive grants and very appreciative of that. And that's VC to money that don't flow through us, that'll flow directly to the companies. Prospects, we work with 10 prospects, had seven site visits, and are currently still working with six of those that have interest in Scott County. We'll continue to do that during marketing and try to get other prospects to come in, but that's a really successful year. We've had a lot turned over. Had a lot of leads and turned those leads into site visits, and that is really great. And with the support from VC to Virginia COVID Economic Development Authority, VEDP, it's great to have all those in partnership with us, TVA included. TVA has also sent us some prospects. Our priorities, there are, we want to diversify the economic base, market the county. We continue to do that, not only the Duffield, but also the River City site and any other property that we have in the county. We assist and retain, grow existing businesses. That's been evident over the past years. We want to continue to do that. We want to develop sites for business. So, you know, if we got one that's going to be, you know, some industry like an industry is moving into, say they take the whole 42 acres, you want to look for the next piece of property. So we want to make sure we're ready for that, and we want to coordinate with other boards as well. So that not only includes the Scott County Board of Supervisors, but the PSA, anybody else we have to work with. So what we're going to do in 2025, we want to continue an application with Virginia Business Ready Site Program for Scott County. We want to upgrade the Duffield, that technology part, and want to upgrade it from a level two to a level four. And we already have secured some tobacco funds for that, and we want to get the matching funds for VEDP. We'll continue to focus on strategic housing in key areas of the county, and, you know, we'll look at those and make sure that we focus on that. We want to target targeted marketing to companies in partnership with VC to VEDP. Want to continue to work as a region to approve the trails of the Jefferson National Forest. That's working with Big Stone, working with Norton to see if there's any other improvements we could do with the Devil's Bathtub Trail. We also want to partner with RIFA, the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority Counties, to gain additional investment and jobs in the region. Already had, you know, announcement there, two announcements, and we want to continue that. We've had some great success there with the region. And the great, there's been some great grant monies that went into that project over in Norton. Want to continue that success. Any questions?
Seems like the RIFA is starting to get some real traction. Wasn't there were three businesses that announced there this year? Yep. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to point 19, Board of Supervisors comments, requests, and recommendations. Anybody have any comments, requests, recommendations? That will end my usual. Okay. Anybody else?
You do a good job on that building up on the hill.
It's coming along.
It's looking great.
Just right up here. I check it about once a week, must be.
That's going to be great. We need that.
The VDOT update, I've received seven calls. Most of the calls I'm getting now are from need for gravel, some grading, nothing on orange bags. They got, I think they got all the streams cleaned at the low-water bridges, so they have taken care of that. One thing that's still hanging out there is a report back in 2023 was the guard rail on Flatwoods area, hanging Rock Parkway on Highway 23. So I requested that they address that again and haven't heard back yet on that. And I will send in a work order for Webb Road that we discussed today. It needs gravel and some work. Something that was added on our news section of the website, Virginia Housing Mobile Mortgage Office will be set up on January the 9th and also January 28th at the Old Thug City parking lot. And those hours are between 11:00 and 2:00, and they do have good incentive packages for first-time home buyers. So the county has got that on their website. There is a contact number on there if somebody needs to call in, have some questions. That's all I have.
What's their interest rates looking like on that?
I didn't get into the interest rates.
Seventy-two going back to COVID. That road there, the guard rail's been down for.
Yeah, that's, I just mentioned, that's one of, that's one of.
Okay, you said 23.
You said 23.
Okay. Yeah, I thought that's where.
It's 72.
Yeah, and you said 23, and I thought, is it another one?
No.
That's it. Anybody else have any comments? All right, are we clear to adjourn until February 5th at 9:00? Anyone want to make one? We?
You don't have to. You just gavel us.
All right. I've been on board.